I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the February 21st, 2019 Planning Board meeting for the town of Wakefield. And we're a little short on board members tonight. So Dick and I are here, and Donna, if you could sit in, she's one of our alternates, Donna.
Is it all ready for you to do it from here?
You can do it from there. So do we have any public comment other than what's in front of us on our agenda tonight? Not hearing any. Seaton, Donna is an alternate. Public hearings, we don't have any. Conceptual review, we have Ralph Fogg representing Lance Moulton, Lakeview marble and granite. 2106 Wakefield Road, tax map 179, lot 51, expansion of a commercial business.
Thanks Tom, I don't think I'll take too much time. Alright, looks like everybody's got a copy of that. I'm hoping that this is what you were talking about as far as providing the planning board prior to the site plan review. Lance does expect that to happen as part of the process. I didn't bring multiple copies of this because I didn't mark up multiple copies of this because I wasn't sure if something else was going to be necessary. This little, sorry Donna about the microphone. Screen area right here is what we would call a best management practice in the form of an infiltration trench to handle the stormwater runoff that we're concerned about. This is a standard application that I do with all my projects as far as rock walls. The height of the wall is usually two-thirds the depth of the project. So this is indicative of what is out here already installed, which was already approved by the state and Cynthia Ballister did the scientific, all the environmental work that needed to be done. This diagram here is indicative of what this area around the perimeter of the foundation would be. So as I excavate the area for the foundation, it's going to be oversized because I am. And when it's time to backfill it, we're gonna, at the bottom of the footing level, we're gonna run a six-inch corrugated pipe, flex pipe, all the way around the foundation and load it up with cloth on the bottom, up the sides, the screen line indicates the erosion cloth. It's gonna be full of inch and a half minus for erosion stone, for backfill purposes. So that is gonna serve as an infiltration trench allowing the water that's coming off the eaves and along...
Where does that pipe daylight?
That will be daylighting behind in this area. Yes, so when it empties into this, it's another big pile of rock. You know, it's effectively acting as a drywall. And of course, you know, for water to build up from point A to anything that might overflow beyond it, and I couldn't imagine that water would build up and overflow beyond a four-inch elevation, you know, from your base. It's just that this depressed area, here's the pub parking lot. This is all, at least beyond that rock line, it's all five foot lower. So it would be not a miracle, it would be something anomaly, I guess is what I would say. Unnatural for anything to build up and affect on the butter's property because all of this area is probably three to four feet above. This is certainly five feet above. And this is all sloped this way. So everything that's coming from around the perimeter, from the infiltration trench, is still on the applicant's property. And I, you know, best management practices are going to be applied. It's almost, it's certainly overkill. There's no natural way for this to really flood above and beyond the project that's already in place. If this area was considered, the existing conditions, if those are considered impervious, this new condition is certainly going to allow water to come into the infiltration trenches. And it's gonna be a lot more area that's pervious than currently exists after the project's done.
So right now, Richard, this is all impervious now. It's all gravel, packed gravel. So the new building, the eaves now, we're only looking at eaves, but he's doing it all the way around. Which I have no problem with, it's the right thing. What I have a problem though with is this pipe and this pipe.
Okay, so there's no...
I don't have a problem with these pipes. But I have a problem with, is see the height of that pipe, Ralph? We want, we want some, we want that pipe at least two foot up. You got four feet of stone here? Yeah, because we want more retention. So slower, you know, we could, you know, you could put, say, 20,000 gallons in there first before it goes out. So you have some retention. So we don't want it to go off this pipe and all of this is doing is filtering the water. But it's going right to that pipe and right back to where you have it now. Which I agree, what you have now, you know, is handling everything now. This wall's handling everything, you know? We've talked to, you know, I know you've talked to your neighbors and they've talked to us a little bit, that what Lance has done here has done nothing but help downhill here. Everything now is going in the ground and doing what it should do versus shedding across the pub parking lot. So with that being said, I would see this pipe as in putting it halfway up here because this is, your slabs up here, right? So it doesn't matter, and it's only gonna be, you know, when you get a lot of rain, you know, you could throw a little bit of stone down here, but keep the pipe high. Because the pipe's gonna make it go quicker.
Okay, and the pipe would be ending here, you know, not, it would be six feet from the face. But your point is logical. I always thought the idea of infiltration trenches was not to allow water buildup, but actually to allow path...
It's like a retention basin under the eave, basically is what it is.
Right, so slowly, the water can slowly go into the earth versus direct point-blade...
Most of the time they don't have it, there's no pipe at all. It's just rock, just stone, and the water goes down there and then eventually goes into the ground.
It's certainly gonna be perccable soils under the base of, under the base of this footing. You know, by the time we're down 54 inches or so, we'll be impercable soils. So I could probably eliminate that pipe and it would still do the same thing because it has that trench.
We're okay eliminating the pipe, but you know, I think we'd be fine with that. Because that's more retention. I'm worried about a little bit of water maybe building up too high against the foundation. But where it's a slab, which is gonna be above grade, near slab height, I think, you know, probably won't be an issue. But at least at a minimum, the pipe should be higher. You know, but if no pipe would be great.
Even better, yeah.
Oh, did I say there was pipe in there? So does that look like the information that you folks were hoping to see?
Absolutely, we want to make sure that the roof water's not just going on the parking lot and running away.
Can you think of any, I mean, I brought a copy of the minutes for back in '05.
This is a conceptual review. So nothing here that we say is binding. You gotta come in with the abadas and have the real deal.
And have this information then. So this was just the original application back in 2005. I thought it would be interesting or important to see what they wanted then, what they've got now, and where it's not really, the business isn't changing. Everything's the same other than, you know, an addition to the building. The work is the same thing.
Putting a newer machine in here that cuts it every which way versus the older one in there.
Lot less manpower, more machine power.
But this, this whole area, leaching area, was the BMP for this parking lot? Water coming down?
And it's designed, it's, in effect, it's this.
I think you want, you want some kind of overflow out of your detention, not much. You know, and it can be, and can be as high as it could possibly be. Because we'd really like to have that as a detention area. You know, it would definitely help. Yeah, as long as, if you had your low point here, no overflow is fine. As long as, you know, some stone through here into this, into this...
But if you need to keep it down on, what you're saying, Tom, is you need to keep it down away from the slab? Then put a pipe in, but keep it high. Most of the water go into the ground right as it comes off the roof?
Yeah, it's very impercable. I mean, there's a lot of bigger rocks and stuff like that.
Yeah, well, you're saying right here, you're gonna put an inch and a half, four feet deep. Inch and a half for a minor stone, so that's what we want.
Thirty inches to thirty-six. Depending on how far I need to... Take away a positive approach and this stuff that you guys... You'll have updated list of abadas and we should be ready for a site plan review. Thank you very much.
So, hearing from two Stonemore Road people in a row, probably not good. Maybe we oughta go to Gillum?
No, I wouldn't penalize these guys.
Second conceptual review we have is Edward and Tina Nason, Stonemore Road, tax map 135, lot 6, for a farm stand. Come on up guys, tell us what you want to do, or what you're thinking of doing.
So just a little information on what we do now and what we're looking to do. The reason we're here is because we have a purchase and sales on that property contingent upon accepting of continuing our operation as we have it now further down on Stonemore Road into Brookfield. So we run this Moose Mountain Farm and we're looking to expand land and get closer to 16 and have a bigger retail space. And you can see, I've listed what we do now and what we're in hopes to do. And a little bit of the expansion on that property would be putting some greenhouses, pasture, some animals, some gardens, and move the bakery. We have a small bakery that we have at our house now, that we'd like to move that out of there. And essentially, we've listed it here, but the key thing for me is to know that I want to operate our farm at that location following the guidelines from the RSA 2134A, which I also put a copy on there for you. And that's the only page on that little packet that is double-sided. The other one's pictures of the stuff that we had last year at our farm stand. Do you want me to read them off to you or...
I think we're okay.
Any questions?
Give us a second here.
Sure, of course, take all your time.
So looking at the application, the thing that you need from the planning board is, I mean, all of those things that you said are you're gonna do, the greenhouses and all that. I'm assuming, I didn't look specifically, but I'm assuming they're all allowed in the agricultural zone. This is all owned agriculture?
Well, I'm not 100% sure how you're...
Okay, so it's actually, it's residential three, 16 acres. Which agricultural commercial is allowed with a conditional use permit in the R3 residential. Wakefield zoning ordinances, page eight, article three, permitted uses.
And what about the farm stand and stuff, that'll be essentially a retail...
For the products that we raise and make and...
So is there any conflict there in terms of zoning?
No, not in terms of zoning. I think we talked originally, we wanted to get the farm stand up and running and then come in with some of the other things. We spoke to the building inspector and, you know, there'd be some issues...
Retail sales of produce grown on-site, essentially, is...
And if you read through the RSA, the page, the two pages, two sides of the page of RSA, it does a very good job at explaining everything that can be done according to the state as agricultural adventure, or venture. Yeah, it's gonna be an adventure too.
It looks like all of that agricultural forestry uses is all either permitted or with a conditional use permit, except earth excavation in that, on a three.
Yeah, which earth excavation is a gravel pit. This, on number three on this, 2134, says, "A farm roadside stand shall remain in agricultural operation and not be considered commercial, provided that at least 35% of the product's sales in dollar volume is attributed to products produced on the farm or farms of the stand owner." So that's what you guys plan on doing.
Obviously, we do, I don't know, right now we do probably 80%. And as, hopefully, as things go well for us and expand, that might come down a little bit. But, you know, it's certainly gonna be well over the state minimum.
Well, that pot's a permitted use anyway, retail sales of produce grown on-site.
My biggest concern on the initial contact with Victor was that to make sure all the parties involved understand that agricultural is not a commercial venture.
And we agree, I agree.
And the future things that, you know, I've listed on this list that we do not do now is like farm-to-table, that falls under agritourism, which is in the same RSA. But, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but that's an up and coming thing. The problem, the reason, if you're not familiar, the reason the state has delved into this agritourism and gone through all of that is, I think, as recently as 20 years ago, we had, I better not quote any numbers, but the farms have just...
Gone away.
Gone. It's so hard to maintain with taxation and everything else that it was a viable way of keeping, bringing income into the farm and, you know, if you can attract people to come. So, you know, don't get scared by the word tourism. It's just a word, a phrase they use. If you bring, if you're doing something that brings people to your establishment, they're calling that agritourism. And, you know, farm-to-table is some things that we'd like to do. And that's usually open-air, you know, giant picnic tables and you put on a dinner that's produced from all the farm products. Educational classes, how to, you know, make different products, how to grow different products. So I'd like to do some of that too, and that's all, that's really not agritourism. But that would be the reason for doing that, is to expand our, hopefully, our profitability.
So it looks like the only place that we need a conditional use permit is that it's agriculture. It says here agriculture commercial versus agriculture personal. So the commercial doesn't refer to the commercial in the zoning. But that's the classification that we'll need to provide conditional use permit under, I think. Just so you don't get...
I'm not really following you, but...
Here's the, here's what it says. This is what you're gonna do, and it's agriculture commercial. It's not commercial, commercial. It's not like a store or a strip mall or whatever. But it is, that's just the term that's used in the zoning. And that's where you're gonna need the conditional use permit. Because all of the other stuff is permitted. The only other one is where there's any reservation is on the greenhouse construction. That's only if you have less than five acres. You have more than five acres, so you don't need anything from us there. But you will need this conditional use permit to conduct agricultural...
I believe, yeah, that's the difference between agricultural, personal, would be a farm where you're not selling anything.
So that's just a classification as far as our zoning, not because it's a commercial like a store or some other kind of fellow that makes the grain at Conoco. That's a commercial.
So, so what you'd have to do to have a conditional use permit, the abadas would have to be notified, and you'd have to come in. We have to, there's seven, there's seven things in our zoning that you have to, you know, is it gonna affect traffic-wise, is it gonna affect this? There's like seven things, is it page 52, Vic? I wanna read those, I think it's 54 maybe.
In the site plan regs?
Uh, no, in the zoning. Or conditional use permit?
Seventy-three, thank you.
You saying conditional use or special exception? One of them saying, it's on 74. So what it says, this is the criteria you gotta kind of meet. And we gotta vote on. The proposed use shall be on those allowed in the ordinance by conditional use, which it would be. Two, the proposed use is or are consistent with the adopted master plan, which it is. The specific site is in appropriate location and of adequate size for the use, which it is, but there's some abadas that may come and say it may not be. The use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located, which it wouldn't, wouldn't think. But, you know, you never know. You know what people might say, but in my mind...
You never know what people might say.
There will be no nuisance or serious hazards to vehicles or pedestrians. You know, so we gotta show us...
No, it's actually the second property in on Stonemore. And I was gonna take some pictures to show you where I have plans for parking, adequate parking, it's beautiful sightlines and all of that, but with all the snow, it was...
And I would sketch it on the tax map there. It's a nice little tax map, what you, you know...
And I'll measure it out and let you know how...
So that's the type of information you want for a conditional use permit. There will be no nuisance. The use will not place excessive or undue burden on town services and facilities. You know, which, you're not asking for a special water, a special sewer, or a policeman there every Saturday and Sunday, or any of that stuff.
Unless we have some rowdy customers. Unless Ralph comes out and...
Number seven, there would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located. So we wouldn't think so, farming's been around forever, but... But you never know, you know? Farming close to the lakes, you know, sometimes it's not great because of the manure and things like that, so... But those are the seven criteria. There is an eighth one, but it only has to do with bolt launches, so... But that's on page 74 of our zoning, which I believe you can get online.
And then we come back here for this?
Yeah, and we would take each one of those in a public hearing and just go down through them and we'd vote on them.
And do I have to notify all the abadas, or, and that's up to me?
When you're ready, you can come on down and we'll go through the application process.
Victor's there to help and it's pretty simple. And then, but you should get us a sketch beforehand, so, you know, we can...
I tried to print out and do it, but I couldn't get it to print offline. But I will, I'll get it all, thank you. Excellent.
But again, you know, nothing we say tie here is binding.
I understand, it's all conceptual. Excellent.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright guys.
Swabby touch.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Alright, I was bringing a case of an alternate.
Okay, we have a third conceptual review tonight. Kurt Gillum, representing St. John's, 118 High Street, tax map 179, lot 1, parish hall addition.
Good glasses, I brought one big plan and these other ones are pretty small. I don't know if I could hold it far away enough to mess up. Thank you. On the second page, we sketched out, you know, where we're proposing building this. Let's go over that first. Yeah, but it's a triangular lot. We just took down our old parish hall. The old parish hall was...
Three, four hundred?
Three, four hundred. No, it was built in 1867. I was surprised at how quickly it came down, but it came down real quick. There was no insulation in it, we just, it was just, we couldn't really afford to operate it anymore. But the congregation wants to build a new parish hall to basically replace it, a smaller, be 2,200 square feet or so, as well for proposing. And if, you can read the sketch on the side, we've got like this dotted line around here, which is, you know, where we're proposing the addition would go. So why we're here today is, you know, we're just kinda, I wanted to just kinda figure out what we have to do in order to proceed with this. Do we need to full site review with the planning board?
Does this have a basement?
Uh, no.
No basement?
No basement, and, you know, the plan says it's a first floor. There's only one floor, so it's the first and only floor.
So it's gonna be a concrete slab on grade, you know, or frost wall the way around it?
Frost wall. Likely yes, again, around the outside.
So you're gonna be doubling the size, basically, the building you have there now?
Yes, well, I'm not really sure what the size of the old church is. I think at the floor plan for that, maybe it's going here.
The church is about 75 feet long by 24, I think.
I don't, it doesn't say what the square feet is, but...
So the, that's our one zone, right?
Yes.
What the zoning permitted uses says, and I don't know that this necessarily applies, cause the church is already there, but a church place of worship in the R one, in the R one requires a conditional use permit. I don't know whether the addition to, you know, that church is here, this is the parish hall, is that considered a place of worship? I guess, I, you know, I don't know, um, obviously, that's, that, if it needs a conditional use permit, I would think it would be a big deal, um, but just.
Placing, we're replacing our parish hall though, essentially.
Right, uh, so I'm I'm open to Vic's interpretation there, I, you know, I don't know, but it, you know, the good news is that it doesn't say it's not permitted.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, at a minimum, you know, I know Dick's thinking about the other stuff there, I don't see it being an issue as far as as that goes.
No, I don't see it, it's just a matter of whether or not you have to jump through that hoop, that's all.
But I know you mentioned site plan.
Right.
We're gonna, we're gonna need something, you know, we're gonna need, you know, how we're gonna control the water off the building. Most of this, we know it takes up a tiny bit of the hot top, which is definitely, uh, not pervious, um, now, but the rest of it's all in the grass area.
Correct.
Which is long, which now all the water right now goes into that grass area.
Yes.
You know, not all the time, you know, it's frozen and doesn't go in all the time sometimes, but, but with that being said, we're gonna need, you know, something for sure.
Okay.
Uh, so we're gonna need some kind of plan showing it, showing.
These are just preliminary.
Yeah.
Plans, so when we get more formal with, we need to come back and do a site plan review with the planning board.
Yeah, and the and the question is whether you need, you know, a stamped engineer to do it or not versus, you know, maybe somebody that's in the parish.
Well, yeah, I mean, we will, we will be having a builder, a general contractor on this, and I I would presume they would have access to a stamped engineer, um, if that's what's needed.
Yeah, I, you know, there's no question you're on the hill there.
We are.
So, you know, it sure would be nice to to try to get a little bit of drainage, and you're gonna have to do something here to the parking lot, so maybe we could divert some of the water that goes, sheds across your parking lot now.
Oh.
You know, maybe over into some kind of little retention area over this way.
Right.
Which an engineer would definitely help you out with.
We are planning, you know, we had the leach field design, uh, come in, and basically where he was planning on putting it is where we tore down the parish hall.
Right.
Cause there's like this open area here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's where he was planning on putting the leach field.
Yeah, so it could, you know, if you haven't done a leach field yet, it might be, you know, you'd wanna coordinate that with some drainage runoff from this.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, some of it maybe could be, go right over here, depending on exactly how the land slopes and the height of your building's gonna be, but it might have to come this way a little bit. You may wanna move the leach field, and the leach field maybe could go here better, or go a little lower, or something.
So we've always assumed that we're gonna, we'd have to do something with water.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Right.
Right, I mean, um, it is, it has been, it was definitely a problem in this building, not as much anywhere else. But, um, you know, there is a culvert that comes through, I don't know, somewhere up here, and.
Comes across the road.
It come, and I mean, and it just puts a lot of water on this lot.
Right.
Um, and so I do think we do, we will have to do something with, you know, burying some, your drainage pipes or something.
Right.
And, you know, some, you know, one of our older parishioners was saying that we currently do have drainage that ties into the town storm sewer.
Yes, it it's possible, yeah.
Yeah, there is storm sewer.
Yeah, it's not, it's just storm, it's.
It's just the drain.
Drainage, drainage system, it ties into the town drainage system there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we can't put more without figuring out whether it can handle it.
Fair enough.
So that's why, you know, right now, the regulations say that we can't let any more water off your land that's going off now.
Mm-hmm.
So even if you got a ten inch pipe going right into that storm drain now, doesn't mean you can add more to it.
But we could continue to use the ten inch pipe that's currently going in there.
Absolutely.
Well, assuming it would be a ten inch pipe.
Yeah, right.
I don't know what they did way back then.
I don't know what it is either.
Yeah.
But I I, you know, where it's being on, it is on that hill, and I think it's quite, you know, especially with that other water that's coming onto it, it'd be nice if, uh, I think, very helpful for you guys to make sure that you have it designed correctly to make sure the water doesn't go across your parking lot, create havoc for you guys in the future too.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so.
We'd rather have it dry.
Yeah, so I'm sure your general contractor can definitely get you hooked up with somebody, but, but as far as the zoning, it meeting the zoning, uh, I don't see an issue with it.
No.
Meeting the zoning, so.
Okay, but, um, as far as the site review is, like, once we get, like, uh, figure out what we wanna build, cause it's a building committee, this is just the first draft.
Yeah.
Um, we get the plan all done, and then it would probably be the builder coming back to do the the site review, I'd go with them, but.
Yeah, and and I mean, you guys, before you go too much into your design review, you know, of the building itself, I would recommend that you get them on board to do a little bit of the engineering for the parking lot, the drainage, and that type of thing, to make sure it's something your land can handle.
Mm-hmm.
Especially if, you know, you say there's a lot of water that, from that culvert on the upper side that comes in here, you know, where is it gonna go, how is it gonna get there, and and look at your parking lot to make sure that they're saying, hey, you're gonna have to change your whole parking lot and all kinds of things, you know, but hopefully not, but.
Yeah, I mean, we did have a guy look at it, and in fact, I think it was the same guy that came out for the, um, septic plan.
Yeah.
And, um, he said, he said something about burying a pipe along this way, and he was thinking of just putting it in like a, that's that's the one you, bunch of rock.
Dry well.
Dry well, he was thinking of just draining it into a dry well. Um, but if we already have a pipe there that goes into the town drainage system.
Yeah, but but you're gonna be, again, you're adding a lot more impervious area.
Roof, roof surface, basically.
Oh, roof surface, so it's gonna be dumping down.
Water, that water's gotta go into the ground, it can't exit the site, that additional water.
Right, it can't exit the site quicker, so, so just say, right now, this is pervious, and now you're making it impervious.
Right.
It's going into the ground, you know, or onto the earth in other spots, but more concentrated.
Mm-hmm.
That can't leave your site quicker than it leaves now. So if you, you got a ten inch pipe, just say it's full right now, it's gonna be, it won't be able to handle the more water.
Okay.
So that's what an engineer's gotta kinda figure out for you.
Okay.
And I, and I think, and he could do it fairly easy, I think it's an easy site, except for the fact of how much water you got coming in. So I think you got a lot of things kinda working where you could definitely use some help with that.
Okay.
Especially where you don't want it going across your parking lot.
Well, it's on a pretty steeply sloped site.
It will run off rather rapidly.
Yeah.
It will.
So, um, in terms of things like additional parking, or, you know, will this increase the need for more parking, for instance, that, you know, when you come in with a site plan, is the parking there adequate? Is this just going to be?
I believe the parking we have will still be adequate, right, because this building is smaller than we had in the parish hall.
And it is replacing the existing building.
Okay, all right, so.
And it it certainly wasn't a problem before, I mean.
And it won't, it's obviously not gonna change the exits onto the road and that sort of thing.
No, we're not, yeah, we wouldn't be changing any of that, I mean, this drawing, there's actually parking here.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't really show very well on this drawing, but.
Yeah.
There is some parking along here, very rarely ever gets used, um, most of the parking is along here and here. We have the handicap accessible here.
Yeah, I think, there's no question, we don't see cars parking along the streets when you guys have your church there.
Problem to have, honestly.
But, but what Dick's question is, with the new addition,
Mm-hmm.
would it add more, that's, you know.
It shouldn't.
Would it increase the use, I guess, from what it was with the, with the existing, you know, the old building that you took down?
Yeah, we we could hope so, but I don't think so, um, it would be nice.
But I think your guy, your engineer or your drainage guy would look at our regs and just see what the parking is, and, you know, just in case somebody brings it up at a public hearing, parking, you know, you might wanna know, okay, we have adequate parking, it might, our regulations might bear that you already have enough spaces, you know, for adequate parking for what you guys do now, so.
So I'm gonna, the designer gave us an elevation, and, you know, the roof that would be proposed, you know, there's a big valley, so the water that runs off there.
It's going around the back.
Is right there.
Right.
Right, so we'd have to, like, design a system to gutter dry well that.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right. So good, so we need, so we need a site review. Yeah, I think it's probably prudent that we get someone to make the plan for that.
Designer or engineer, whatever, who seems as though you've got enough issues there that trying not to figure it out on your own probably won't make sense.
Figure it out, yeah, but, yeah, no, it would be somebody who would know, uh, what to do with the water, and, you know.
And that was my point with your design, maybe you don't wanna get too much into the design as far as the roof goes. You know, the building and what you want in it, you know, the offices and your hall and those type things, you know, you need all that.
Yeah.
But maybe the roof should go away from the parking lot. You know, so the roof line could change, so that's why you should maybe get an engineer or a site guy involved sooner than later. You know, just to to look at some of those things.
Yeah, yeah, with the town's, uh, requirement.
Yeah, with our regulations, they're pretty, they're online, they're pretty basic.
Are they any different from this, any other town in the state of New Hampshire?
Yeah, they're, every town's a little bit different, but yes.
They're available online, it's site plan and subdivision regulations, and.
They'll know.
Whoever.
They'll look.
Does that kind of work is gonna be able to go through it, say, okay, this applies, this doesn't.
Right, right, pretty easy.
Okay.
Great, all right.
Thanks, guys.
Great.
Just knock him, knock him off, Vic. So now we have postage increases. Four cents, so that four cents would be per a butter, is that what that is?
That is correct, yes.
So if there's a hundred butters, could be forty bucks?
Four bucks.
Four bucks? Hundred buck, a hundred of butters would be four dollars.
We're talking four cents, four times one hundred.
So my only problem with this, what you had mentioned to me in the past, is that we need to, uh, why do we have to increase it? Okay, cause, go ahead.
Well, okay, because the postage rates have gone up, so it's basically notifying the public. And because we've adopted the fees in the site plan regs, uh, page seventy-six, article nine fees, nine point zero one application fees. A set of schedule of application fees shall be set by the planning board after due notice and public hearing. A current listing of the schedules is available in the Land Use Department. So because of that, definitely have to, the planning board needs to notice it.
All right, so we just noticed we're having a public hearing on our regulations, not the zoning.
Yeah, just the postage increase for, about us.
I thought, I thought for some reason it had to go in front of the voters.
No, just the.
Subdivision, site plan regulations.
That is correct.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So we can set it up for you.
Yeah, so set it up whenever you like, and we'll get it done.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
So do we have to notify all the butters, how many do we have here in town?
It's gonna cost four cents more.
I will look into that.
All right, so just, you know.
We'll cover with a public notice in the newspaper.
So the newspaper's the same, and, but the per butter is going from six eighty, oh, six seventy-six to six eighty.
To six dollars and eighty cents, that's correct, an increase of four cents.
Then we got plant, planning board escrow deposit.
All right, so I've been asked to go over this, these are, uh, application fees, escrow, uh, monies that we have in escrow for past.
Project.
Projects.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so Bridget and myself had gone through, and, you know, we're bouncing all the numbers. So a lot of this is, is we were charging a hundred and fifty dollars for a professional planner fee in case we need to to ask information, and what we've been finding is, um, his bills have been a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, so the difference has been left in escrow, along with a little bit of interest added to that.
Mm-hmm.
So I have individuals, I don't know if you wanna go over everyone, or.
So give us an example, here we have Canal Farm, back in two thousand fifteen, who's Canal Farm? Do you know who that was?
That was a few, these are all before these.
Oh, that's the, the Flint project.
Well, okay, that's, that's, it's two different, it's two different jobs.
Canal, oh, Canal, that's Canal Road, that other one down on Canal Road.
So. We'll hurry back in, is the, this next. I'll see, so it's one fifty price, so.
So what you're saying here is he gave two hundred and fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you withdrew a hundred and fifty.
Correct.
And then withdrew fifty-three, which left forty-seven dollars.
Yes.
So we should give him back his forty-seven dollars, it's all done, it's all accrued.
Right, yes, yes. So, and the other thing is, is one, these were run, so in other words, these could, this could actually be a couple more cents of gained interest. So if we can approve it, uh, with accrued interest.
Yes.
So do we, do we wanna go through?
I, I, you have the authority to give them their money back.
Okay.
As long as we agree.
Okay, all right, so, okay, here's one right here, San Bornville Dollar General.
Yeah.
Five cents left.
Yeah.
Let's just close that up.
You.
Why do you wanna return five cents?
You can close that out.
All right, this was Flint subdivision, took in two fifty for the planner, the planner charged a hundred and eighty-seven dollars, that left a difference of sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, plus eleven cents of accrued interest, and again, it could be a couple more cents.
We need is Flint, if we're good with Flint getting their money back, whether it's fifty dollars or sixty dollars, we.
That was going on, uh, Level Lake Road, right?
Yes.
We got Martel for one fifty-one back in two thousand seventeen.
Yes, there was, I, we could not find any receipts or any call for a planner services.
Yeah, I don't think there was.
Okay, ripped up, so it's a hundred fifty dollar plan fee plus interest accrued.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
J K O J A, embashed holder. I don't know where that one was, I can't remember where that one was. July twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen. It hasn't made an impression on us, so we must've, must've done something pretty simple.
The plan. Well, yeah, let me look into this one right here.
Okay, yeah, please tell us where it was, at least, it'd be nice to know. We got another one from Flint or the same thing?
That's the same, that's the same.
Same one, yeah.
Yep. Alright, so Flint, Martel, San Bonneville Dollar General, Canal Farm.
Do you want those listed in a minute, that just said you're gonna give money back to people?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is that Terry Martel?
Yes.
He passed away.
Yeah, it's still, the business is still there.
I hired her and his son-in-law, who's working with him, and his grandson. I didn't know who knew.
Yeah, John Seer and, and, um, Terry's daughter, um, Bonnie.
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, that reminds me, I probably, I think I had like, I had a lot of money in my escrow back then, 'cause Catherine Minisi was here, it was like five thousand dollars. And I know I didn't see it down back, I must've spent it all.
No comment.
Sure.
Statute of limitations, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright. I didn't get this on the gender, it was given to me at last minute.
What do you got?
This is from town attorney.
Okay, do you have one, Richard?
Yep.
Do you wanna read it? So, I know these guys came in for a conceptual review of some kind, or they come in, did they actually come in for a subdivision?
Okay, so I pulled minutes, if you go back to the back page, uh, the last pages, uh, planning board minutes from November second, two thousand seventeen. Number eight, re-subdivision application for Vincent Carbone, for properties owned by Vincent Carbone and One Enterprise Drive LLC, located on Scrivna Hill Road, tax map one fourteen, lots four and fourteen. Two remaining parcels were created during the Scrivna Book Estates subdivision in nineteen eighty-four, however, were not included in the original subdivision.
Okay, so I believe all is, they weren't here in a public meeting, it was a public meeting, but it wasn't a public hearing.
Yeah, it was a public hearing.
Was it a public hearing?
Yes, it was, yeah. November second, two thousand seventeen.
Planning board.
So the, the board accepted the application. Oh, wait a second, it's off, it wasn't here, I must.
Oh, okay, I see it, yeah.
John evidently was a voting member, I don't think I was here, I don't remember this at all. Had concern about the road evidently.
So, Rick's trying to settle this versus go to court.
Yes.
So all the butters that were here, they all got noticed on this lawsuit, and none of them responded, so, by default, the gentleman had won their case against Scrivna Hill Estates. Sounds like what Rick's saying, and now, they have to settle with the town. 'Cause they named the town and Scrivna Hill people individually in the lawsuit also. So Rick's saying, I'm firmly in favor of what Carbone seeks, and I'm looking for the planning board and the board of selectmen to give me the okay to sign the stipulation. I have spent the minimal amount of time on this matter and hope to keep doing just that. So if we wanna read this stipulation.
The stipulation seems to only refer to lot fourteen.
That's correct.
Wasn't the dispute, that was four and fourteen, right? Evidently four, four would remain in the way it is now.
No, I think the one that was in front of us was only for fourteen, and we had mentioned the other one also at the time.
But the, the, um, public hearing was for four.
Four and fourteen.
Fourteen. Yes, but the opening paragraph here, number one, says lot fourteen, two and a half acres.
So it's clearly just for the one lot, okay. Doesn't mean that the other person couldn't come back and say, I want that lot also.
So this, number seven, it says the plan, second plan says that lots had to be at least five acres. But, I guess the opinion is that this two and a half acre, lot fourteen, was part of the original subdivision. I don't, I don't know that it matters, if we're gonna.
Well, that was the problem, about the original subdivision or not part of the original subdivision. It was not part of the original subdivision, 'cause they didn't move the road yet.
Okay.
So once the road got moved, so they left those two lots out in, in airspace.
Okay.
Until that road got changed.
Yeah.
They changed the road, and then they.
The road used to go over through that lot.
Correct. So now they automatically thought, they changed the road, that they have two lots, one on each side.
Right.
But again, you're right, it didn't meet the five acre.
Right.
Um, requirement of Scrivna Hill Estates.
Okay, but that was not the town's requirement, that was the.
Yeah, that was the developer.
Developer requirement, oh, I got it.
Part of their covenants probably, or something like that, that every lot had to be five acres. Or they didn't get subdivision approval.
Yep.
Or you don't need subdivision approval if every lot's over five acres.
So our attorney says, let's settle it, end the problem, I guess.
Donna, would you like a little bit of time to review this, or are you, you alright?
I'd like a copy to bring home, you're.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you think, Richard, that we need a public hearing on this or not, I mean, it's gone through the court system. And all the butters were here, um...
I think we're acting on the advice of the town council. I don't know exactly what the motion ought to say, other than that we, we, uh, agree with the stipulation and agreement for judgment. That the town ought to settle. I'll make that as a motion if that's appropriate for what, what's needed. And evidently this, this select, selectmen have gotta vote on it as well.
And they haven't voted yet, they're voting on the twenty-eighth, is it next Wednesday?
Yes, yep.
Seems pretty likely.
They wanted your, the planning board input. Yeah, that's, I agree, again, not that I have a vote, but.
And it's a buildable lot that would be taxed with a, with a building on it, a house on it, which is.
Good for the town, good for the owner, all wrong.
It doesn't seem to.
It's been a house on it approved before. It was a trailer, huh? So can you repeat your motion? Does it fail for a lack of, lack of second?
Accept the advice of, um...
Town council on lot.
Fourteen, tax map one, one four, um, and that the town signed the stipulation dated, I guess it doesn't have a date on it, yet, but that is inside. Stipulation and agreement for judgment, Vincent Carbone and Maria Romero, uh, versus Scrivna Book Estates Homeowners Association and the town of Wakefield, so the planning board is part of the town of Wakefield, um, make a motion that we sign the stipulation.
Second, yeah.
Okay, second accepted, little discussion. I'm a little perplexed about it, only to the fact that, you know, we're doing it here, we're, I don't know, maybe we should be doing it in non-public. I don't know, but either way, it just seems like, like when, if, if other people have sued the town in the past or whatever, they've always had to come back to the planning board and, okay, get it approved, you know, that they have a public hearing and, and then we, we say because of this, this and this.
Stipulation, I see.
You can, you can go ahead and, and, and get approved. You know, we, we agree with the court, or whatever, we're complying with the court, and it's approved. So I'm a little perplexed on us doing it, I, I agree with Rick on, on it, but I just don't know if,
So.
I just don't know if procedurally we're doing it properly.
Right. So apparently what the stipulation says, though, is that the lot was, will be considered as, um, uh, appropriately subdivided, so it, so it's, the planning board doesn't need, according to this.
Right.
Legal document.
It says it was appropriately subdivided.
Right, and so that the planning board wouldn't, wouldn't see it again, wouldn't need to vote on it, because, um, the stipulation says that it was part of one of the, that original subdivision. And, uh, at least that's the way I read it, um, on.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I think, I'm good with it.
I mean, they could've written it that said, go back to the planning board.
Sure.
Um, but they didn't, they basically said it's already a sub, a legal subdivided lot and can be built on. Stipulated, court agrees to it, um, I think it's beyond our, beyond our control.
Well, this isn't, this isn't the, you know.
Yeah, it will, once this is stipulated, the court, it actually becomes an order of the court, it's.
Correct, correct, it would. But it doesn't say that we can't ask for other things in this stipulation.
No, I, I guess, yeah, that's probably true. And if there's a reason for the, the, Mr. Carbone or Maria Romero to come back to the planning board, what would, I guess the question is, what would we, what would we be acting on if, if they came back? Maybe the stipulation went further than it needed to go, maybe the stipulation could've said it, it, it would appear that it, that it, the conditions that require those lots to be non-buildable or un-buildable, or whatever it says, um, um, that no longer applies, because the road now has been fixed and they're, they're, so go back to the planning board. Like, what would we be approving, what would they be submitting to a subdivision plan?
The, the road got changed to put in the right spot.
Yeah.
None of the butters liked the road.
Yeah.
Because of those big corners coming down the hill, but not that if it was already subdivided, it was already subdivided, and it was already done, it was already done. And that's what they're stating here, that it was already done.
So I guess the question is, what would the planning board be acting on?
I, I guess it would be, just, the butters would be notified again and.
So.
Have, have one more, you know, shot at it, but I'm not sure that, you know, they had their shot in court.
Well, I mean, if the town, if the town refused to sign on to this, then the, the lawsuit would presumably continue, I would guess. 'Cause this is stipulating an agreement that would end the lawsuit. A lawsuit, if the, if the stipulation isn't signed, then the lawsuit, I assume, would go forward, and a judge would decide at some point.
Correct.
What the, evidently Rick is saying, look, you know, it's clear to him, this is what, you know, the outcome's gonna be anyway, probably, so we gotta.
Well, if he, and if you go to, uh, item number nine, the property shall be deemed to have been lawfully subdivided in nineteen eighty-three or in nineteen eighty-four, and shall hereafter be considered a legal, lawfully existing grandfathered lot known as tax map one fourteen, lot fourteen. The property may be built on in the normal course provided any, and all construction complies with the usual town of Wakefield's ordinances, rules, codes, and regulations applicable to any structure such as, but not limited to, compliance with setbacks and necessity of state-approved septic system. I think that covers it.
So I guess, Don, I don't disagree with you that maybe the butters should've had another shot at it, but.
But they, they had their shot, they were sued, they had their shot at it, and they decided not to go forward with it.
I guess the way that stipulation is worded, it doesn't leave anything for the planning board to do, other than to agree to settle the lawsuit with the stipulation. And if we didn't do that, and then Rick didn't sign it, then the lawsuit would go forward.
Okay. I'm okay with it, you know. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of previous minutes.
It's very complete and crystal clear, previous minutes.
Donna was here.
I like the draft, yeah. I'll tell you, when you look.
Don, were you a voting?
Searching archives and trying to look.
You weren't a, a voting member at that time, one, two, three, uh, February seventh. Looks like Doug.
Only two of us.
Yeah.
That, that were here.
Yeah.
So I'll put these off.
Yeah, let's hold them. Alright, next on the agenda, public comment. Do we have any public comment, David? Set the next meeting date, will be March seventh. Other than that, we have nothing else before us, unless you got any correspondence for it.
What were you adjourned?
I'll second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.